Hello and welcome, this is the regular meeting, a regular session of the Town of South Kingstown Town Council. The date is February 22nd, Monday, February 22nd, and the time is 7:30. Can you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dale, can we have the roll call, please?
Here.
Council Vice President Eddy.
Here.
Councilwoman McAtee.
Here.
Councilman O'Neil.
Here.
Councilwoman Whaley.
Here.
All members present.
Thank you, Dale. Next is the approval of amendments from previous meetings, from A, from the work session of February 8th, 2010. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is from the regular session from February 8th, 2010. There are motion?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is the consent agenda. Is there anything that anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda?
Kathy, I'd like to remove Communication Item C, 7C.
Any other items? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the, um...
I move we approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We moved right past licenses, everything was on the consent agenda. Next, we go to Communication Items. Communication Item A is a communication received February 5th, 2010, from Robert Allen Silverstein, StopDatingViolence.org requesting a proclamation recognizing February as Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Month is received, placed on file, and the Town Council further directs. What would the council like to do?
Well, I would think we could support this.
Send a letter of support?
Absolutely. Dating violence is certainly an issue that we want to address.
Okay.
And prevent it at all costs.
Okay, so Carol made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? No? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we're going to move on to Consent Agenda C. Communication dated February 9th from Paul Costabile concerning state funding cuts for education is received, placed on file. And Jim, you removed this from the consent agenda, would you like to speak on this matter?
Yeah, since I want to just always keep things open here, I wanted to address, he really had three questions. One, did Councilwoman O'Neil state that South Kingstown was getting too much education funding from the state? I want to continue to be on record that in fact is true. Yes, the answer to that is yes. I am recommending to those I talked to that I think that South Kingstown was getting more than their fair share for state education funding. And I do have and will recommend some cuts. I would also advise the gentleman that the House bill last year had all $10 million being taken away with the formula from South Kingstown over a three-year period of time. I don't think it's any secret that everyone in this council knows that I'm very disappointed with the school committee now more than ever because I really feel now that there are no, the tooth fairy does not exist anymore out here. And I don't want to get into a battle tonight, but I'd be happy to here, but some of the examples that I think the state, if they looked at what we were doing here in terms of the Broad Rock hiring and staffing bonanza that took place in 2001, too, the four years of use of surplus revenues and excess budget-approved spending that took place from 2000, 2004, the teacher contract with the NEA, I think everyone is, knows I'm on record for that. I think that was an absolute slap in the face to the taxpayers by our school committee. And I'd also like to remind this gentleman and the audience that we have almost $3 million of surpluses that were built up over the last five years after the referendum vote back in 2005. So to me, the reason I am behind this particular movement, if you will, even if it's by myself from South Kingstown, is because it certainly looks like South Kingstown has taxpayer money to burn, and I'm very, very concerned about that. And I've warned the school committee many times, as well as my colleagues here in the council, that school spending is totally out of line with the current school population drop in the excess facility space. And I hope we take very seriously, and Gordon Fox has mentioned it now for a second time, he is our new Majority Leader of the House, and he's warned us now twice that communities must run tighter ships if they want stack, excuse me, if they want state taxpayer support. As far as I'm concerned, the school committee does not run a tight ship. The second question he asked, "I was criticized for my school spending stance because I have no children in the school district." And frankly, would be, I don't think we'd have a whole lot of folks sitting at tables or in the General Assembly if that was a rule. Many of our elected officials do not have children in the school system currently, and I'd love to know what that has to do with anything. I think it's the Town Council's job to represent everyone in this community, both fairly and balanced against very powerful competing interests. And I've been in this council for 10 years, and many times early on have supported the school budget, especially when I thought the school committee understood the dire financial issues facing our state and town. But unfortunately, that all ended five years ago with the excess spending, and the nail in the coffin was the contract with the NEA that they signed back in 2008. His third question to me, "How can Jim O'Neil be a Town Council member?" And sadly, I guess civics is not a strong suit here, but the voters have always determined that. We work here, we rent these seats for two years from the voters, and it is up to them, and it's always been up to them. Unfortunately, I believe this letter expects that that would be overly with our allegiance to the school committee and the school population, and I think that's very far from what's needed by our Town Council members here. With 3,500 kids in our school system, maybe another 6,000 parents, that's 10,000 folks, but the 30,000 people that live in this town, that's 20,000 other people that we should be representing, and I feel I represent fairly everyone in this community. Unfortunately, I really feel that sometimes I do this alone, but I understand the power of the NEA, they control the school budget. School budget is a huge part of the town budget. As you know, it's close to 80%, and of that 80%, salaries and benefits are well over 80%, so they're about 65% of our total budget. They're very powerful, not only in South Kingstown, but throughout the state of Rhode Island. And my job as a councilman will be continued to warn and inform the voters that this debt crisis in Rhode Island is real, that deficits will crush our future spending opportunities, and I think the council, and I will always take measures to correct this taxpayer abuse and provide a future where everyone shares proudly and fairly. If we don't, the kids that many of these folks pretend to help will be smothered with debt and kept from fulfilling their full potential. So that's my response to the letter, and Mr. Costabile can always give me a call if he has any questions or further rebuttal to my comments tonight.
Is there a motion for approving of the Communication Item?
A motion, put it on file.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
I just, Kathy, if I may...
Carol?
I just wanted to say that obviously, and I think we addressed this the last time, that this, by Jim saying that South Kingstown is getting too much funding from the state, that is not, certainly not my opinion as a council person, and I believe other members, the majority of us, don't agree with his stance on that.
Okay, Carol, that's, is that it? Since nobody else has spoken, then I'll also say that I disagree with Mr. O'Neil's stance and what he cited in the paper. And first, I just want to say that my apologies for Mr. Costabile, for Mr. O'Neil saying that, insulting him, saying civics is not his strong suit, I don't think that that was apropos to a council person. It's a thing of showing respect, and I think just throughout that whole statement, I think everybody can pick out what pieces of respect were there or not there. School budgets are 80% of the budget in the Town of South Kingstown. It doesn't mean that the NEA is the power of the NEA, it's a matter of, there's people that go behind that, there's teachers, there's aides, there's cafeteria workers, there's real people that that money goes to to support, you know, people's jobs and educating the children of the Town of South Kingstown. So you act like it's one big lump of sum of money that's taken from the taxpayers and thrown away. If you look at the test scores that have come out just recently in the Town of South Kingstown, I think the money that is spent in the Town of South Kingstown has been spent wisely, and our grades support that. The school committee over the past few years has made great strides in making things more equitable, downsizing schools, closing the South Road Elementary School, for instance, in years past. The numbers that you put in, you have including the middle school being opened up, you don't take into regard the full-day kindergarten program, which brought kids back from some of the charter schools that cost money to the town. It's so involved, we went through this with the referendum, not the referendum, the, I guess it was the referendum, just a few months ago, on exactly what the money has to, what the taxpayers pay and what we get from it, and you have to look at it a per capita basis and what the town spends, and what the people of the Town of South Kingstown pay in both their property taxes, their state income taxes, and the money that comes back to this town. I think that we get our fair share. I hate to see it keep getting cut back by just saying blatantly that we're getting too much money, I think is completely wrong statement to make. I don't want to keep rattling on here, but the math, I've totally disagreed in the past, and I'll continue to disagree with Mr. O'Neil on some of these issues, but to say that we're getting overpaid, I think that's an insult to everybody who pays personal income tax to the state of Rhode Island and the money that we get back in the Town of South Kingstown. So, that's mine, it's been moved, it's been seconded, and now Ella? I didn't know you had to say anything, I'm sorry, I didn't need to...
Sorry, Kath, no, you just triggered some thoughts in my head following the school committee business in reference to the article that South Kingstown receives more than its share. Just wanted to reiterate some of the things in the past with the state opening a group home and, you know, South Kingstown funding a lot of some of the education there, in the charter schools with the changes of laws, and also with the changes of the laws with some of the parochial schools in town. So for instance, South Kingstown, even if there's neighboring districts that send children to the charter schools or the parochial schools in town, we here in South Kingstown with the changes in law pick up that. So, South Kingstown has taken on more expenses within the past three to five years, so to say that we get more than our fair share, I definitely disagree.
It's been moved and seconded.
And I'm going to comment on some inaccuracies there. The private and parochial schools, if you want to go to those games, the last numbers I got from the school superintendent were about 550 kids. Yes, do we pay for books and transportation? Yes, and we should, because those parents, if you just, you know, pull up 500 as a number, times 17,000 per student, you know, you're looking at eight, eight and a half million dollars of what those parents give up to those students in this town for the public schoolchildren. We should be thanking those parents and those families for that sacrifice, not only the paying the bills at the private schools, but with that tax money, 80% of their property taxes are going for the other children that they care about, but not their children because they're in private schools. So that's a fallacy, that number. And otherwise, you know, the school committee needs to find out on a per-child basis, when we spend upwards of 13 to 14 million more than North Kingstown, 17, 18 million more than Barrington, 21, 22 million more than Cumberland, I've got the numbers, you can call me at any time, then they might be doing something right. And if those communities had the kind of money that we were spending, maybe we'd be left in the dust. And the reason the education funding formula is so important, which none of you are looking at here, is the importance for this state to survive into this next decade, and as long as we have those inner-city communities which are so hurting, where the children do not get the kind of funding that we're getting down here, and for us to circle the wagons and say, "We need to get it all," and leave them, let them just fight for every last bone, is a wrong attitude, wrong policy, and really a wrong statement for the betterment and the future of the state of Rhode Island.
I'll just refer you back to the referendum, and if you go back to, and I'll print up the article, about looking at the per capita of each town, including your Barrington and North Kingstown numbers, how it doesn't float, it doesn't wash. I've looked at your numbers, I've looked at what the state has for their numbers, I trust their numbers more than I trust your numbers. I'll get a copy of what I put in the paper, or you could even go probably back to the independent history and do a real, true per capita cost, Jim. You leave things out when you compare to North Kingstown and Jamestown, we had this disagreement, the people voted on it the last go-around, this past, when did we have it? May, April, May, June, what time was that? June? When did we have that referendum? Steve, I forgot, I'm just...
The referendum's in June.
June, correct, thank you. Working on it through April, May, and June, but it was in June, and...
Well, I couldn't disagree with you more, Kathy.
Well, I disagree with you, too. So we've had a motion, and it's been seconded.
Well, I'm very, really, I want to get through the deception and lies that I think the school committee and their supporters put forward previously, a referendum last year. We need to put this all out in detail, otherwise we'll have another referendum this year.
Oh, really? Okay, so I guess the battle has been, gauntlet has been thrown down. Go ahead, Ella.
Kath, I just wanted to clarify that by no means was it any kind of a derogatory statement toward the parochial schools, and I'd like to clarify that the course that was incurred by the Town of South Kingstown was in relation to special education course with children attending parochial schools. It used to be funded by the town where the children resided, and the law was changed, and then recently changed, so we picked up someone with special education cost. Just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, I'll just, more in depth and I'm sure more thought out, thank you Ella for getting the exact detail. Okay, we've been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? I'll get a copy of that to you, Jim. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Okay, so we'll move on to F. A resolution adopted on February 1st, 2010 by Providence City Council requesting state legislation establishing a blue alert program to issue information on suspected assailants who have fled the scene of a crime involving an officer who has been killed or injured, is received, placed on file, and the Town Council further directs. That's the council's pleasure.
We discussed this in the work session, and we decided that this really would be more appropriate to be decided by police people, and we decided that we would refer this to our Chief of Police, I believe. So that's my motion.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item G is a resolution adopted February 11th, 2010 by the Warwick City Council requesting the General Assembly legislation to ensure safe distances between motor vehicles, bicycles, and bicycles traveling on roads, is received, placed on file, and the Town Council further directs.
I think what we decided is to place this on file in our work session, so that's a motion.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is a resolution adopted February 9th, 2010 by the Windsocket City Council in support of House Bills 7011, 7075, 7087, 7123, 7135, 7153, and 7178, and Senate Bills 2012 and 2033, is received, placed on file, and the Town Council further directs.
Well, we discussed this at the work session, and I believe we agreed to place this on file also, so I make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Kathy? Yeah, I wish, somehow or another, we could ask Windsocket to have these bills separated. I think we agreed that some of these made sense, some didn't, but to package them like this leaves us no alternative except to place it on file, but I would like to contact them and have them separate these out.
All right, so it's been placed on file and seconded, so...
So I guess I'm asking for, is that a motion then on top of the amendment on Carol's motion to also include a letter to the City Windsocket Council? Could they separate these resolutions out? How would we go about that?
We certainly could do that, but this council would still have the opportunity, if it wanted to endorse one of any of the 10 bills, to take each of them individually and just endorse whichever legislative acts you're in support of. Regardless of whether Windsocket gave you 10 separate letters, you could take action that you feel is appropriate on any of the specific legislative acts that are there. So if you're in favor of one and not the other nine, you could send a letter to the General Assembly endorsing that one piece of legislation, Jim.
So right now, we have the motion to place them all on file, so, and it's been seconded.
I'd certainly love to move on a couple of these, but the two that love to move on seem to contradict one another in here, so...
If you want to move specifically on those acts, and you want to, you could either do that tonight, or you could request to have it placed on a future agenda, Jim.
Well, then if I ask to amend Carol's motion here, to amend that House Bill 7135, this act would repeal the Carrillo Act, is that a proper form of amendment? I'm looking for a second.
I, yeah, I'm not going to second it, Jim, but I think that what we really need is more information on this. I think that there are bills that we perhaps would like to write to the legislature about and ask for their support on, but I think to take a list from Windsocket, I don't think we need to limit it to that. I think that we could, if you want to do the Carrillo, let's do that another time. But at this point, I think the list that they have put forward, we know that some of them are negating the other ones, and it really was not, I don't think it was a very thoughtful list of bills. I think if we wanted to support bills in the legislature, we should know what we're talking about, and we should, you know, find out and then put up our own resolutions.
All right, so you want more in depth, you just don't want to say just House Bill, the act to repeal the Carrillo Act? Do you want more data behind it?
I just don't want to take what, one town, a list of one town, I think we have our own bill, House bills that we would like to support, and Senate bills, and I don't think we need to take another, I think it may encourage us to look into it more and pick out some we would like to support.
Okay.
But I would not be in favor of the amendment because of that reason.
I would say let's, if we want to put these on file, and then if you want to go back and look at the House Bill 7135, it also ties into the Senate Bill 2033 that they're also looking at, so I mean, it's, you take out one and not the other. If you want to just look at those further down the road, is that what you would like to do, Jim? So at this point, we'll place on file and then pull up these for our own review.
Do you want me to provide you with copies of these bills?
I think that would probably be...
Yes, yes, please.
I'll do that, and I'll put them to the manager to send out.
Because I don't blame Polly, because one sentence here, one-liners, it's not to say, all right, throw, I'll wait behind it, it's...
Are you looking for information on the bill that's going to repeal the Carrillo Act?
Carrillo, and the Senate bill. So why don't we look at the two of them together?
As I said earlier in the session, the concern is that with some of these bills, what's the mediation? If you do away with Carrillo, what is going to be inserted as the process to be able to deal with the school budgets? Each of the different legislative acts may have a different process, but one that had been recommended was to set up a three-person order, another one was to just simply postpone the use of Carrillo for a part of the period. I can get a copy of that specific data from the Town Council, so if you can determine whether you are in favor of that, and we can add it as the agenda in the future.
All right, if we could do that for the House Bill 7135, Jim is amended, and possibly, Jim, if you might want to add that Senate Bill 2033.
Yes, let's do that, Senate Bill 2033.
Okay, so, is everybody all right with that amendment?
Yeah, it's good.
Very good.
Okay, I think it's been amended. Do I need another second on that amendment?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, next we move on to...
Do you want to place that on file?
Yeah, that we're going to...
I thought we just voted on the amendment, Kathy.
Steve, was that enough? With that, just looking into that and then placing the rest of them on file? Is that what we voted on? We started, we put, we placed them on file, then we asked for men to look at those two, the House and the Senate ones, and we voted. Is that all we need to do on that one? We can move forward?
That's fine.
Okay.
Good.
Make sure we cross the i's and not the t's. It's all right, Polly, I take constructive criticism very well. Number eight is comments from interested citizens. So if anybody would like to come forward with a comment?
Kath?
Okay.
Ella? I just wanted to say I haven't done a report out on the chamber in a while, so I stopped by there today. And Dancing with the Stars is still a go, the date's been changed from, I believe, April 25th to May 2nd. So if you wanted to mark your calendars, they have 14 couples already signed up, it's one of their big fundraisers, should be a blast. And then, again, their gift certificates, and we have Liz Boardman in the audience. They're, Betty Carter and Liz Boardman are doing something at the Chamber, it's free, at 7:00 to 8:30 on March 4th. It's for businesses, how to submit information to newspapers. It's called Get the Word Out Seminar. So, sounds interesting.
Okay, thanks, Ella. Any other questions or comments, or, nope. Moving on then, we're going to go to the Town Manager's Report, Steve.
The Town Manager's Recommended Budget is required to be submitted by March 1st. I intend to have the budget out publicly on Friday of this week. Budget hearings are scheduled for March 1st, March 2nd, March 4th, and March 10th. The March 10th session is dealing specifically with the school component of the municipal budget. The first three sessions, the first, second, and fourth, will deal with the municipal budget. The first three sessions will start at 6:30 here in council chambers. The meeting with the school committee on March 10th will begin at 7 o'clock. The public is certainly invited to attend for the budget hearings and to be able to ask whatever questions they feel are necessary to get a better understanding of the budget Second item tonight is I wanted to have Vin Murray report to the council on the Comprehensive Community Plans survey, which is now available for residents to be able to complete. So Vin, would you give us a, to a minute?
Good evening. As part of the update process for the Comprehensive Community Plan, through working with our consultant, Horstley Witten Group, we have developed a Community Attitudes Assessment Survey, which is quite similar to what was used in the update done in 2004, and it's, the similarity is intended so we can track trends over time. The survey has been out and live for about a little better than a week's time now. It's available online with a link through the town's website, to the Horstley Witten website. We also have it situated in terms of hard copies in four locations, at the town clerk's office, at the Neighborhood Guild, at the main library branch, and at the senior center. If people are also interested in, not an online survey, but would like a copy mailed for their individual use, they can contact our office through the Town Hall phone number, 789-9331, the extension for planning is extension 1244. To date, and we'll do to get a report from the consultant tomorrow in terms of the survey activity to this point, but based on what I've seen in terms of the hard copies and talking with the consultants last week, we've had a pretty decent response thus far. There was an article last Thursday's Independent, we had done some press releases to the local papers about the availability of the survey. We would certainly urge all community members to take advantage of this opportunity to comment on land use and development issues within the community, and I would also make note that the Chamber of Commerce had provided a link through their website and through their e-newsletter today, so we appreciate that as well. And we did an email blast, which I believe all the council members had gotten, where the survey was referenced to a group of something on the order of about 150 people around the community that serve on boards, commissions, and... around the community that serve on boards, commissions, and other involved parties, so to speak. And through the town's website and the Horstley Witten's website, local people can sign up for updates on the plan update as it goes forward through an electronic medium, and we're going to do our best to communicate in other means for those who are, may not have a computer at home. So, thus far, it's going well. We haven't done an analysis, per se, but, you know, if history is a guide, the people of the town will take good advantage of this opportunity to make comment, and we're looking forward to this being a good basis for crafting the update in the spring into the early summer months. So, that's where we stand at the moment.
So, we have no numbers on how many responded yet, or...
Well, for the email blast that was done a little better than a week ago, I think about a third of the people who had been emailed initially had taken the time to do the survey. Only takes, I don't know, maybe 10 minutes or so, and, you know, I think it's worth the effort, and people have the opportunity just to answer questions, also to free-form comment on issues that they may think are good, or not so good, or offer suggestions, or, you know, tell us where to go with the plan, so to speak, and all that good stuff. But it's a good opportunity, and we hope, you know, I'm confident people will take advantage of it, because the people of this town are not shy when it comes to expressing their opinions, and that's a very good thing.
It's a very good thing, absolutely. Thanks, Vin. Any questions for Vin?
Vin, how many recipients of your email blast?
Excuse me?
How many people were reached with your email blast? How many households?
It was, I think, around 125 plus or minus. That was the initial list, and that wasn't intended to get everybody. I mean, there's, but, you know, we're, it's on the town's website for links, it's under latest news on the planning board's page, the planning department's page on the website, and we tried to get the word out. I think, you know, it's filtering out now that we'll be accepting the surveys for at least a couple more weeks, and if need be, we can extend that timeframe. But we want the broadest possible representation of opinion to be included in the survey. And, you know, the survey, as I mentioned, is structured similarly to that was done in 2003, so that we can compare the trending over time. There's some new questions as well, but, you know, I think it'll be a helpful tool, you know, and to supplement other outreach efforts that will, you know, public hearings and the like as the process goes forward.
So, you do have those lists of the folks who are at the charrettes with former changes that were recommended for the comprehensive plan?
From five, six years ago. We do have lists, we don't necessarily have email.
Okay, yeah, I just didn't know that you got your list, okay.
Yeah, we, the list is something we'll build, as a matter of fact, because, you know, it was a starting point, putting that together, and people can jump on or not, you know, based on their preferences.
Carol, go ahead.
You know, Vin, the school has the biggest email list, I would say, of anybody in the town. I wonder if that would be a good idea to give it out to the principals, or if you could do that. You could reach a lot of people, because they reach a lot of us that way, as it is.
We could speak to them about, you know, taking advantage of their communications ability to get other people, because that's, the more the, the more the mayor...
Yeah, because I got mine, I answered it, so...
Yeah, I'm good.
Filled it out.
Okay. Any other questions, Vin? Okay, Vin, well, hopefully you'll get more response now.
Oh, we hope so, yeah. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks, Vin. Anything else?
We'll have Vin back in two weeks again to update the council on this. I don't have any other items other than the budget to report on tonight. I'll answer any questions on either of the two reports issued since the last council meeting, if there are any.
Any questions for Steve? Nope, so we move on to the town solicitor, who we have Nancy here this evening. Nancy, do you have anything you would like to add?
Good evening, no, there is nothing to report. Thank you very much.
Next, we have appointments, but I think we did that at the last council meeting, so I think we're all up to date on those at this point. Next, we have a new business item. First one is on the consent agenda, the next one will be B, which is a resolution authorizing an amendment to the contract originally granted on April 26, 1999, and amended on March 26, 2007, to Geological Field Services Incorporated, 156 Tremont Street, Melrose, Mass., for landfill gas consulting engineering services from amount not to exceed $20,000 to an amount not to exceed $25,000. It is further describing the memorandum from the public service director to the town manager dated February 8, 2010, titled Rose Hill Land Management, Land, excuse me, landfill methane monitoring consulting engineer contract amendment. Steve?
As John's memo indicates, GFS has been the consultant of record on the two monitoring alarm systems that are in the two private residences that are but the landfill. We will need to continue to do the periodic testing and reporting the results to both EPA and to state DEM. As John also noted in the memo, we're hopeful that the new system, which is being installed, which would actually act as a vacuum to bring in the methane gas, should have a positive effect as far as reducing the potential for the outflow of the methane onto those private properties. But until we're sure that that system is effective, the monitoring wells will need to continue as such the request for the appropriation increase of the $5,000. Again, any of the costs that we pay for associated with Superfund at Rose Hill, 50% of those costs are paid for through the town of Narragansett.
Is there any questions for Steve regarding this? Do I have a motion?
I'm with approval of new business item B.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, new business item C is a resolution authorizing a ward of bid to Motorola Incorporated, 12 Walker Way, North Situate, Rhode Island, for the purchase of 800 megahertz digital radio equipment, complete with installation, programming, and delivery, in an amount not to exceed $113,276.09, including contingency. And is further describing the memorandum from the police chief to the town manager dated February 16, 2010, entitled Bid Recommendation $800 Megahertz Radio Equipment Acquisition Balance to Complete Project.
The chief's memo and the accompanying exhibits to that memo delineate the types of equipment that will be purchased. The town will and continues its program to migrate from a VHF system to an 800 megahertz radio system. This is a digital system that will provide opportunity for first responders in South Kingstown, which is inclusive of police, CMS, and fire, and communications division, for access into the statewide interoperable communication system. This way, we can communicate with all different branches of public safety within the county as well as on a state level. The town has maintained a capital improvement program since the 2007, 2008 year for the redevelopment of the dispatch center at the public safety building. The equipment that's being proposed for purchase and installation tonight brings us one step closer to being able to provide for the completion of that new radio system. The police department has also been quite successful in securing both federal and state assistance dollars to be able to pay for the program. The overall cost of our radio systems and ancillary equipment replacements is about $550,000. To date, we're expecting in the area of about $151,000 coming through state and federal sources. We've also been funding this through the capital budget with contributions on a yearly basis going to the reserve fund, so that there would be no spike in terms of the property tax impact. The equipment will be going through the master price agreement through the state of Rhode Island, so we know we're getting best purchase price available for this equipment. The equipment is also in operation of the police departments across the state and has been found to be effective in providing for the service at the 800 megahertz system requirements. So, with that, I'd recommend the council award based on the presentation of the chief's memo of February 16th.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions for Steve? Do I have a motion then?
Motion to approve new business item C.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And that comes to the end, so do we have a motion to adjourn?
I so moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Meeting is adjourned, and it is at 8:14.